Call the meeting to order, regular council meeting Monday, May 21st, 2018. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Rules of Order. We operate under Robert's Rules of Order that we adopted last November at the meeting then.
Should we have the door open? It is a public meeting, should we have the door open?
We can have it open.
I just make a lot less noise now than if someone tried to get it open and come in.
I'm up there greeting everybody.
Yeah, there you go. Walmart.
Never mind.
It's only retirement.
Item four, Adoption of the Ellsworth City Council Minutes from the following meetings, April 2nd, 2018, special meeting, April 16th, 2018, regular meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous. Item five, City Manager's Report. Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hot off the presses, Governor Lapage has named Ellsworth as one of thirty-two federally designated opportunity zones in the state. From what I've been able to research on this, there are going to be certain federal tax advantages to being in an opportunity zone related to the investment of unrealized capital gains in opportunity zones. So we appreciate the governor's designation and are looking forward to learning more about this.
Leave it open. Leave it open, tell them to quiet.
Harbor Park, as you know, the Prok barge was down there and the huge crane doing work. Prok has left, the work has been completed. We're very appreciative that Prok was able to get in early as the season is just getting ready to begin, so we were able to do the repairs that resulted from the astronomical high tides and ice damage from January. So that's done and full speed ahead on opening the park. Water Street Parking Project, it's going along very well. The contractor's working very well with the businesses in the area, providing updates and on where to park and what's available. And I would say that's going to be done certainly by early to mid-June at the latest. Also, the city and our Public Works Department, led by Director Lisa Sucklich, has been working with the Green Committee on a roadside cleanup. Over forty-five of those huge bags were collected just in one area of the city, and this, I think, will provide the foundation in future years, working with volunteers, for the spring cleanup. And thank you to everyone involved. I had one more thing. Oh, yes. Pleased to announce that Tammy Mote is going to be returning to the city of Ellsworth as Deputy City Manager effective July 1. Delighted to have Tammy back. I know that she would excel at anything she did, but I guess her heart was back here at City Hall, so welcome back, Tammy. Appreciate it very much. And that's what I have.
Great. Thank you very much. Item six, Committee Reports. Any councilors that have attended committees in the last month, yep, want to report?
Well, building on the harbor report that Dave already opened, thank you, Dave, I'm hoping that a lot of people in Ellsworth had a chance to go down by the harbor and actually watch the progress that Prok Marine made and to see those enormous machines doing what they needed to do. And I think probably just about everybody knows how badly damaged the harbor was because of the ice in the winter and so forth. But the harbor master and the harbor commission has convinced the council that we should be looking into an interesting invention called Ice Eaters. And this is a device that you put in the water and it circulates the water and brings warmer water up more to the surface. And if it works well, it will keep ice from forming in a dangerous manner around the pilings and docks and so forth. I think it will work. The nice thing about it is the cost of these Ice Eaters is less than the damage that was done, so we win there. Plus, if it works, we don't have to take the docks and the slips out, saving work, taking them out and putting them back in, so that our highway people can stay on the job and work on the side of the road and so forth. By the way, those things work in Minnesota, so they're as cold as we are. The replacement of the fuel tanks is on hold until at least the fall and perhaps even into the spring of next year. By the way, there are good hamburgers down at the harbor. I don't want to give anybody a plug or anything, but those hamburgers are really good. The harbor releases budget, they're flat funded for 2018-19. That was very kind of them. And something that was a very interesting thing for us all to attend at the close of our meeting on Wednesday the ninth, we all went down to the harbor and dedicated the new gazebo that was erected down there. It's really a beautiful thing. It was procured and put up by members of the...
Els Club.
The Els Club, yeah. Just kidding. By the Els Club. They did a great job, it looks really great. And it was kind of, it was fun to go down there and do that. And that's it. Did you have any, do you want to add to that?
I wasn't in the meeting.
You want to make something up?
They frown on that, so.
On that note, anyone else? Councilor Fordyear?
I missed the Recreation Commission, but out in the field, have to thank the aforementioned Highway Crew who helped get the ice skating liners out of the park, put the benches back on Wilson Field, and have agreed to come to the basketball courts some morning in the next couple of weeks, so I can teach them how to install the sound curtains on the lower court. I have not been able to get volunteers to do it, so we're going to go up and do that. I have the ladders and I have the equipment, and I have done it for the last three or four years, so we're going to go up and tackle it some morning. And as an additional update on Councilor Moore's harbor commission, the problem is is that those Ice Eaters cost $1,000 a month to run electrically. So we're going to need to put something in the budget for their budget down there if we are going to do that project, which I think is an excellent project. I'm not saying against it, but we need to acknowledge that, and when we finalize the budget next week, is add some money in there electrical for those.
How many were there?
Oh, God, was it thirteen or fifteen of them?
Thirteen or fifteen. Fortunately, they're not that many months, it's just a lot of Ice Eaters.
Yeah.
Mr. Cole?
We've applied from a grant from the State Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, and we expect to hear at any time to help pay for that. So we may have some news soon on funding of the, what'd you call them, Ice Eaters? Ice Eaters?
Not Ice Eaters, Ice Eaters. Anyone else? Moving on to item 6A, Appointments to the EMS Committee that we started last month. It will be Councilors Fordyear, Councilor Beatham, and Councilor Blanchard.
Ms. Chairman, I have a question on that, not on your appointments, but we've had a working group doing the same thing for about four or five months. The charge to the committee, any different than what we were working on as a working group unofficial? Do you still want us to review the needs of EMS in the city of Ellsworth and come back with recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, in addition to those, to the three members, it will be staff, city staff, as needed slash asked.
Are we required by FOAA to post and have public meetings, or would three councilors, can this be an internal committee who brings their recommendations to a public meeting?
I'm going to run that one by the city attorney.
Because it also affects a number of other committees that we have, so we should get that cleared up. Thank you.
Item seven, Citizens' Comments. You set aside this time if anyone would like to come to the podium and let us know of something, tell us about something, good or bad, I suppose. If you do, please come up, state your name, and what you'd like to say. Seeing no one taking advantage of that magnanimous offer, we'll move on to item eight, Presentation of Awards. We have one tonight. He'll be here in three, two, one.
Got to remember where you have the camera focused.
City of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Jason Engels in recognition of your ten years of service as Systems Administrator for the city of Ellsworth. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community and contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Presented this 21st day of May, 2018, David A. Cole and Heidi Noel Michael, City Clerk. Thanks very much.
And he's out of here in three, two. Unfinished Business, item nine, Council Order 04180, 041811, Request of the City Manager to Approve the Discontinuance of Lemon Street and Orange Street. I believe that's been tabled again for another month.
As the saga continues.
Sumo.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Consent Agenda. All items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tonight, item 10, Council Order Number 051802, Request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to Accept Payments on Tax-Aquied Timeshare Units Per the Attached Spreadsheet and to Authorize the City Manager to Release Said Properties Through the Municipal Quick Claim Deeds. And item 11, Council Order Number 051802C, Request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to Accept Payments on a Real Estate Purchase/Installment Contract Repick, Building Located at 10 Linsgate Way, MAP 020, Lot 0180ON-000, and to Authorize the City Manager to Release the Building, Said Building Through a Municipal Quick Claim Deed.
Mr. Chairman, move to accept and approve the Consent Agenda as read, items number 10 and 11.
Second. All those in favor? Under New Business, Item 12, Public Hearing Enaction on the Applications for Issuance of the Following Licenses. And there's a bunch of them this evening. First one, Finn's Irish Pub, Inc., Doing Business as Finn's Irish Pub, 156 Main Street, for Renewal of a City Class B License, Amusement, Victular, and Liquor, and Renewal of a State Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 Mal, Spiritus, Vinus Liquor License. Councilors, any questions? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this license application, this is your Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Ms. Chairman, one question.
Yes.
Ask staff if there's any issues on any of these license applications.
I did, I meant to ask them in public.
Just for the record, that's all.
Thank you.
Move approval of Finn's request?
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Ellsworth Number One, LLC, Doing Business as Hampton Inn, Ellsworth, 6 Down East Highway, for Renewal of a City Lodging License. This is a public hearing for Ellsworth Number One, LLC. If there's anyone that would like to speak? You're all quiet tonight. Closing the public hearing. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure this evening on this?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the renewal of the city lodging license for Ellsworth Number One, LLC, DBA Hampton Inn.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Ellsworth RI LLC, DBA Ellsworth Ramada, 215 High Street, for Renewal of a City Lodging This is a public hearing on Ellsworth RI LLC. If there's anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Gentlemen, any questions on this one? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the Ellsworth RI LLC license.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Next, Brian Langley, DBA Union River Lobster Pot, 8 South Street, for Renewal of a City Class C License, Victular and Liquor, and Renewal of a State Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 Mal, Spiritus, and Vinus Liquor License. This is a public hearing on Brian Langley. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Counselors, any questions on this? If not, I'll take a motion.
Ms. Chairman, move approval of the request of Brian Langley and the Union River Lobster Pot for relicensing.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Cresswell Investments LLC, DBA Airline Brewing Company, 173 Main Street, for Renewal of a City Class B License, Victular, Liquor, and Amusement, and Renewal of a State Restaurant Class 3 and 4 Mal and Vinus Liquor License. If no questions, I'll open the hearing. Seeing no takers, hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of Caswell Investments LLC, DBA Airline Brewing Company.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions? If not, all those in favor? Shinbashi Incorporated, DBA Shinbashi Restaurant, 139 High Street, for Renewal of a City Class C License, Victular and Liquor, and Renewal of a State Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 Mal, Spiritus, and Vinus Liquor License. This is a public hearing for Shinbashi. If there's any comments? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the license renewal for Shinbashi Restaurant.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Rockbound Management LLC, Doing Business as Twin Hills Cottages of Acadia, 210 Twin Hill Road, for a new city lodging license. Is there a representative?
Hello?
Would you stand and state your name, please?
Hi, Lieutenant Clark.
If there's no questions, I'll open the hearing. Seeing none, close the public hearing and entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the relicensing of...
For a new license?
Oh, it's a new license?
Yep.
Oh, that's right, okay. Twin Hills Cottages of Acadia.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Lors Empire Incorporated, DBA Dragonfire, 248 State Street, for a new city class B license, Victular, Liquor, and Arcade, less than twelve devices, and a new state restaurant Class 3 and 4 Mal and Vinus Liquor License. Is there a representative present? Would you state your name, please, for the record?
Harry Lors.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for Lors Empire Incorporated. Seeing no takers, I'll close the hearing. Counselors?
Ms. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Should we have a suite number for the record, not for the license, but are you taking over an existing space, or have they given you a suite number?
The council's still out on that one, but they think it's five.
So you're not taking over the existing restaurant that's in there, you're adding to?
Yeah, there was no existing restaurant.
This is new space.
New space, okay, good. I just was thinking for the fire and police response, it'd be nice to know what suite it is, so once they nail that down, we can get it through.
That's where the cell phone company was.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Is there a motion?
Ms. Chairman, move to approve Lors Empire Incorporated, DBA Dragonfire, for a new city license and state license.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, is this conditional on the CO, or do they have it now? Okay. So it should be in the record?
All those in favor? And lastly, The Max Incorporated, DBA The Max, 191 Main Street, for Renewal of a City Class C License, Victular and Liquor, and Renewal of a State Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 Mal, Spiritus, and Vinus Liquor License. Open the public hearing. Hearing only a cough and no voice, I'll close it. Counselors, any questions? If not, I'll take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of Bruce Wardwell on behalf of The Max for relicensing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Item 13, Briefing from the Maine DOT on the Reactivation of the Rail Crossings in Ellsworth.
As you know, improvements are underway to the rail line in the northerly direction and which would take it across the Union River and beyond. I asked the Maine DOT and representatives of the Down East Scenic Railroad, which operates the line, to come here tonight to brief you, the council, and by extension, the community, on what is going on and their plans to reactivate two crossings at Lake Slane and 179. Tonight, we have Brian Reeves, who's the rail manager for Maine DOT, and then I'll let him introduce his colleagues. Brian?
Good evening.
Why don't you come up, Brian?
Right up to the podium, if you would, please, sir.
Then you could be on camera.
Good evening. With me tonight is Tom Testa and Levitt Furnell from the Down East Scenic Railroad. This has been a part of the long-term plan for Down East Scenic for the last few years, and as you've seen, we've been working towards that with the Union River Bridge, as well as we'll be doing some track work this year. So with that, the intent is, within the next year or so, to begin using the Lake Slane and the Route 179 crossing again. So this is mostly information for the town to let you know what we are doing and where we're progressing. All the signage is in place, to the best of my knowledge, and we'll be sure to verify that before operations continue to proceed across the crossings. But as you're aware, last, a year or two ago, we did work on Route 179, and the state placed the signs back as required by the MUTCD, and I believe those signs are also in place at Lake Slane. I guess I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Counselor?
Are you going further north? Are you going to cross 180 also?
At some point. We don't know yet when.
It's curious that the city built a new road and had, with a lot of federal dollars, I appreciate that, but had to put a full signal at a high school, and the state DOT rebuilds 180 and 179 and doesn't have a nickel in the game. It just amazes me that I felt treated like a second-class citizen, because you didn't have to do it on your own road, but we had to do it as a school crossing that isn't open when the train runs. Just a political point.
Mr. Chair, perhaps you could explain what the standards are on 179 and 180 versus the new high school access road, and what's required.
It's easier to say "I'll get back to you" than make something up.
Yeah, that's going to be... I will have to get back to you.
Fair enough.
Yeah. I saw him swallowing hot.
Well, and, yeah, I do believe that there was some federal highway safety crossing money that was contributed for the Ellsworth High School.
Absolutely.
So, yeah. But, I mean, generally, it's a public safety, you know, that's number one. Knowing the extent of the number of crossings at the school, I understand that it's not necessarily during the operation of the railroad, but I think it was in part due to the fact that the existing crossing was already up to that standard as well. But I can certainly look into it further for you.
Thank you.
Counselor Beatham?
I would like to remind Mr. Fordyear that when we built the high school back on the backside of the railroad, we agreed to put a full-blown crossing in if the train ever ran again. So it was an agreement that we made prior.
You made a pretty good bet at the time.
And if we'd done it that time, the State Department of Education would have paid 97% of the cost, but I guess we got okay, we got ninety from that.
That's right. But we appreciate the update.
I'm just proud of the years that you've had and of the work that has gone into it by the Down East Scenic Rail, and entering, what, your ninth year, I believe, Mr. Testa?
Ninth year of operating.
Ninth year of operating on the rails. Pretty good for the, pretty good for the project that was never going to get off the ground and would never be a success, so that's the kind of failures we want. That's the kind of failures we want.
Different subject, but you'll love this one. Is there any way that we can get you to agree to allow the city to take care of the bank from Beals Avenue to the old Irving Station that you kill with herbicides every year, so that we can make it? It's right across from Irving and Denny's?
Okay.
Behind the wall, above the wall?
Okay.
That's one of the places that, all year long, it looks dumpy. And it'd be such a nice place to have some flowers in there. So I would send that to Tom and his crew and your spray crew. It's, I believe it's y'all right away.
Yeah, please, please send me an email. We do do no spray agreements, so that's something we certainly can look into.
Okay. It's all brown and tattered right now. It looks like 1A. Thank you.
I have a question on Lake Slane and 179. When those are crossed, will that be a manned crossing, or will that be a whistle?
That'll be a whistle crossing.
Two more whistles?
Correct.
He lives on the rail.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
It might be good to clarify for the public. We get questions, thinking the bridge project is a city project. And it might be good to clarify who owns what, who has responsibility for it, what's the relationship between the Maine DOT, the Scenic Railroad, and the community?
Certainly. So the Maine Department of Transportation is the owner of the line, the entire, as it was formerly known, callous branch, part of which has become the callous trail. And the other portion is leased by the Down East Scenic. So as part of that lease, the Down East Scenic is generally responsible for track maintenance, and the department is responsible for structures. So the Union River Bridge is actually a project of mine that I started when I was a rail engineer, before I took the rail manager position. And it's a cooperation with the Down East Scenic, who will be replacing the bridge timbers to make the bridge come back into operation.
Great.
DOT funds or private donor funds?
DOT. Well, for our portion, DOT, private donor for theirs.
Yeah.
Mr. Cole?
I'll bring this up, because I know Planner Gagnon will be grateful. There's a street, Spring Street, which runs parallel to the tracks. And there's been some discussion as to whether it's possible to convert that into a pedestrian way, or at least partially a pedestrian bikeway along that stretch. And from what I've been able to research, it's a combination of of ownership between the city and the railroad. And I guess to ask the question, would the DOT and the Down East Scenic Railroad be interested in discussing that possibility? Obviously, there are some people who use that for driveway access, and so they would have to be accommodated. But in many ways, that road is redundant to other streets and might be best utilized for a pedestrian bikeway. Would you be interested in talking about that further?
Certainly. Yeah, we do do, we work with many municipalities around the state, next to state-owned lines. And we do do land leases and that sort of thing, to allow towns to do exactly that type, you know, walking trails and that sort of...
It would bring that trail up to Main Street?
I'll have to familiarize myself some more with that.
And while you're right here, one other question to Tom. What's the latest on the 409?
470.
Oh, 470, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll speak to you about that.
Levitt Fernal here is more directly involved in that than I.
Well, right now, we're in the process of completing the building it's going to be housed in. And later this year, we've got grant money that's come in to rebuild the tender. We're trying to get $100,000 for that. We're up to about $83,000 right now. So as soon as we hit our mark, the tender tank is coming off, it's going up to Chinbro and Pitchfield. They're going to build a new one for us. And after that, we'll just have to see how the money comes in.
In your best guesstimate, that would be steaming through Ellsworth?
Of course.
But when?
Well...
Will I still be alive?
When you're trying to sleep.
My standard answer to that is if you hand me a million and a half dollars right now, today, I'll quit my job where I'm working and I'll spend full-time on it. And we can probably have this thing running in less than five years. But realistically, it's probably going to be at least one anyways. That's my guess.
I think when that happens, it's going to really attract a lot of attention.
Well, that's what we're hoping for. Well, it's the last steam engine that was in the state of Maine, that ran in the state of Maine back in 1954, which is about a year before I was born, so that kind of gets things in perspective. And they used to pull the Bar Harbor Express, that's what it was bought for when it was brand-new. So that's a very significant part of our history, too.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Counselors, any other questions?
No, good work.
That's good.
Thank you.
Item 14, public hearing in action on counsel order number 051803, the Ellsworth School Budget Resolutions for FY 2019. Heidi? Do these, you want to take these up one at a time?
Superintendent Higgins in the back of the room, if you need. Back left.
Yeah, go on up, Dan, if you would, please. Action taken pursuant to items 1 through 4 must be taken by a recorded vote. First one, order approving state and local EPS funding allocation for public education from kindergarten to grade 12 for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2019. School administrative unit contributes to total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as required by Maine revised statute Title 20A, Section 156901AB. City Council Order Number 051803 ordered that the city will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as prescribed in the Essentials Programs and Services Funding Act, recommended $8,868,483.75, and to see what sum the municipality will raise as a municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the ESP Funding Act in accordance with Maine revised statutes as mentioned above. School Board recommends $8,868,483.75. Having said all that, I'll open it for discussion.
So first, a comment and then a question. The comment is that, there's one to go on record, that my wife does work for the school department. I don't believe there's a conflict in what we're talking about, but I did want to go on record of stating that. And the question I have is just, do you have any sense in terms of, I understand that with the inaction by the state legislature, that there are some pending action that they need to take still on, as it impacts school budgets? And is there any new information about that?
That's a good question. The answer I can give you is, there is a legislative legislative correction to ensure that school funding will flow. I believe it's in the governor's hands. My understanding is, if the legislature does not come back into session to vote that particular bill, school funding will flow as directed by the ED 279s.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Fordy?
I'd like to see a copy of this with allocation spelt right in the first sentence. It just, yeah.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair? Superintendent Higgins, subsequent to to Counselor Hamilton's question, if the state commitment comes through, is that going to impact what we're looking at right now? And do you know by how much?
If the state comes through, well, whether it's the governor taking action or the legislature taking action, the figures that you have in front of you tonight are what is going to move forward. There is, to my understanding, one bill that is still pending, that they may or may not hear at the legislative level, which could add $2.5 million to $5 million into general purpose aid.
Total? For the whole state?
Total, for the entire state. So if...
Okay, that hasn't changed, then?
It could be. If that bill were to pass, there could be a reduction in this first article that you're talking about, in a very small amount, but it would be to the benefit of the city.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Have you had the public hearing?
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, there is a public hearing.
On each one of them, yep.
Let's open a public hearing on this matter. If there's anyone that would like to speak, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, state your name, and state your business. Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the School Board's recommendation of $8,868,483.75.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion? Yes.
If I may address the council, just to let you know that that figure that you're about to vote on, that is the amount of money that we have to raise locally in order to receive full state funding.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Counsel.
So I would also just like to point out that this goes out to the voters in June. And I would encourage everybody to take a look at, I know you presented this in the School Board Committee, in terms of the details behind it, and I think it's important for people to understand what's going into it. In particular, I'll mention one, is that you're adding some allocation for some safety measures, which I think are extremely important, especially in light of all the things that have happened this past year, nationally and locally. So I just, I just think it's important to go on record, to encourage people to look behind what we're voting on tonight, get into the details as it goes out to vote.
Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous? Second one, order approving non-state-funded schools' construction debt service for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2019. City Council Order Number 051803 ordered that the city will raise and appropriate for the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state-funded school construction projects or non-state-funded portions of school construction projects, in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12. The School Board recommends $86,548.49. Discussion? Questions? Comments? I'll open the public hearing on counsel order number 051803. Anyone that would like to speak, you're more than welcome to. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move counsel order 051803. This is, this is the overage we are responsible for, for the auditorium.
I agree, but you just moved the whole order, not just that one part of it. They're all numbered the same. Okay, so you should move the School Board recommends...
School Board recommends $86,548.49.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Third item, order raising and appropriating additional local funds for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2019. City Council Order Number 051803 ordered that the city of Ellsworth raise and appropriate $2,103,782.14 in additional local funds, which exceeds the state's essentials program and services allocation model by $2,103,782.14, as required to fund the budget recommended by the School Board. The School Board recommends $2,103,782.14 for additional local funds, and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essentials programs and services funding model by that amount. Their reasoning is this amount is needed to cover the school department's expenses that are not recognized or fully funded by the state's funding model, facilities, maintenance costs, special education costs, technology costs, transportation costs, professional development costs, and system administration costs. Discussion?
Question, Mr. Chair?
Counselor?
So in terms of, I guess it'd probably relate both to technology costs and professional development costs, is there a significant amount of that allocation related to the proficiency-based system and the back and forth of that, as you implement new curriculum?
Yeah, so a large percentage of our professional development costs are directly associated with the transition to a proficiency-based model.
And how, have you had discussions in terms of, across the state? There seems to be a big movement to move away from it. Communities are moving away from it. The state, perhaps, is looking at legislation. How will that impact? We've sunk a lot of costs into, to that model. I know my son has had four different grading systems in the, as a high school student, which hasn't been particularly great, and that continues. Now we're going to put more money into it. At what point are we going to see a change or shift from that, as we go forward?
With regard to the proficiency-based diploma model, right now, the state law is still for a proficiency-based diploma. There are still several bills in front of the legislature, again, if they come back this summer. There is a bill to repeal that requirement, there's a bill to, and there's a bill to amend it. One of the things that we've looked at locally is, when you look at the model in and of itself, particularly with the instruction, assessment, and learning that takes place, it's an improvement over the model that most of us went to school in. Our intent, again, I don't believe that it's going to go away. I do know that across the state, there are some different perspectives on it. I know that with the colleagues that I've been working most closely with, other superintendent regions, excuse me, other superintendent regions, there is a desire to stay with the model that we're working on. And I would, I would acknowledge, yes. It's similar to flying, while you're flying a plane, to rebuilding it. And that's what we're doing, unfortunately. But I think when you look at the work that our teachers, our administrators have been doing in the schools, and our students, even though there have been multiple changes, they've really done an outstanding job. As to which way the legislature is going to go, if they come back this summer, it's a $64,000 question. I don't have an answer for that one.
But you intended to move forward with what you... The budget, it's not lost costs. You will continue with the curriculum. The proficiency-based might change, but the curriculum, we're not going to see a whole new curriculum thrown in with new costs and all the money that's been sunk into this thrown out the window.
The intent for Ellsworth School Department is to move forward with what we're working on. I certainly hope that there's not a change at the state level to push us into a different direction. I think that would be disastrous. But in terms of the cost, no. There is always a need to work with our staff, to give them opportunities to improve and enhance their abilities. It will be money that's well-spent.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I'll open the public hearing on this matter for additional local funds. If there's anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, move approval for City Council Order 051803, appropriation of additional local funds in the amount of two million one hundred and three thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Counselor. Just a political comment, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, an election, uh, election year, so don't count on the legislature coming back. Mr. Higgins.
May I also make a comment?
Certainly.
With regard to this particular article, um, when you're talking about an additional local amount, if you think back to the history of the essential programs and services funding model, in its initial inception, it was a model designed to replicate what high-performing districts were spending as a baseline. Along with, uh, legislation for LD1, it moved from being a baseline expenditure model to a capped expenditure model. That's one of the reasons that you see it being insufficient to fund public education in many local districts. That's why there's a request for additional funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Is the motion and a second on the table? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Quick on that one.
Order approving total school operating budget for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2019. Total budget article as required by Maine revised statutes Title 20A, Section 15690 4A. A school administrative unit must include a summary article indicating the total annual budget for funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve in the school administrative unit. The amount recommended must be the gross budget of the school system. This article does not provide money unless the other articles are approved. City Council Order Number 051803, order that the city of Ellsworth will authorize the school board to expend the fiscal, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, from the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve, as prescribed in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the Maine Revised Statutes Title 20A, Section 15690, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. Recommended total amount is twenty-one million one hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
I guess this is the, the time when, in past years, I would speak up and say, "Well, I'd like to reduce the budget by," but I will not do that this year, and, but I will say that this year's budget is up seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. And you've pared the budget down quite a bit from where it was when we started, but that's still a significant amount of money. And, um, as the city grows and as the schools grow and everything else, um, I'm just wondering how far that the taxpayer is going to allow things to go before they say no to something. Um, I realize that education's very important, but I also think that, you know, what we need to do here is to do the very best we can with what we have to, to do it with. And, uh, getting the dollars worth of dollar, value out of a dollar is one of the things that we have to work very hard to do. Um, that's why I think that, you know, a, a seven hundred thousand dollar increase is, is a substantial increase, and I think that, uh, you know, the people need to speak on it. I, I agree with Gary, it is going to go to a vote, but, you know, are they going to understand the budget and what it's, what it's supposed to do? That's my question. So, so at this point in time, I guess I support the rest of the budget as it is, is proposed, so.
Were you looking for an answer from me?
No, I'm just stating a little bit of facts, so.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor.
Um, so I, I agree, I think, I think one of the things, and this is why I made the comment in terms of, I hope that, uh, before the vote, people look at it and, and understand what goes into it. Part of the cost, I know, is, is due to enrollment, some enrollment increases, expected enrollment increases next year, um, so understanding per pupil costs, I think, is helpful to understand how costs might be, um, being impacted. But to your point, in terms of as the city grows and as enrollment grows, um, that's going to be an ongoing issue in terms of having the right resources. I mentioned the security pieces that you've put in there after having a, a, a public forum to discuss that. Um, I think that, that you put something in there that was reasonable but needed. Um, but I do think that paying attention to the overall budget is important. We've seen other communities where, um, there isn't an understanding of what goes into a budget, and it's voted on the numbers. Um, so the more we can have understanding to arrive at a sustainable budget, short and long term, um, it's important for the city, and, and I think the outcomes, which is to my point about proficiency-based, um, I think we want to have strong outcomes for all of our kids in the school system, and, and for the amount that we spend, um, we should have, um, the, the best school system in the area, and that's what we should be pushing, and we should be tapping into our teachers, I have to say this because I live with one, um, not really, but, um, they're, they're outstanding, and they're, they're the ones who drive that, and they're educating our kids every day. Um, so a reasonable budget, but one where we pay attention to the costs and we keep them manageable.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would it be possible, and maybe it's not appropriate until after, there's a motion and a second, um, because I, I did come with a presentation, I certainly, um, in listening to Counselor Hamilton, uh, I've got plenty of details, I know that wasn't the plan for this evening, um, but, you know, Counselor Beatham, Counselor Hamilton are making some very appropriate comments, but I think the presentation that I came prepared for tonight will address some of our budgeting practices in the school department, because what both gentlemen mentioned are things that we've been doing since we restarted in 2014 in crafting these budgets.
If you have a presentation, Mr. Higgins, then I'm all ears.
I assure you, it won't, it won't be a lengthy presentation.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chair, council members, audience members, and citizens of Ellsworth, I'm pleased to present the proposed FY 19 Ellsworth School Department budget this evening to the council. As we have each year, Ellsworth School Department staff, administration, and the Ellsworth School Board continues to build upon the strong foundation that was established back in 2014, which was our first year of operation once again as Ellsworth. Consistent with the school department vision and mission, our overall goal continues to be making this Ellsworth School Department the best in the state of Maine, one that provides an outstanding and comprehensive educational and co- and extracurricular experience for all of our students, and plays an integral role in the continued growth and development of the city of Ellsworth. We understand the importance of a strong school system to continued economic development, and appreciate our role as a partner in that growth and development. We appreciate the great support afforded to us by the council and the citizens of Ellsworth over the past four years. Please know that budget preparation efforts take into consideration and assessment of current and future needs, sustainability for subsequent budget years, and appropriately and adequately funding our program with a budget that's fiscally responsible to citizens. And as one of you alluded to, I think as you, Counselor Beatham, since presenting our initial budget draft publicly to the school board on April 10th, and to the council in a workshop on April 13th, uh, much work has transpired to craft a final proposed spending plan that addresses our priorities. It doesn't address all of our priorities, however. Okay? The initial draft that included all requests from all departments included an increase initially of seven point two-two percent, or about one point four-eight million dollars. Okay? And that would have been an increase, increase in the local appropriation of almost ten percent. However, we know, as a school board, myself as a superintendent, and also as a citizen, resources are finite, and we can't expect to address all of our needs in a single budget cycle, nor would we even think about bringing forward the final proposal, something that increases the local appropriation by over a million dollars in one year. So subsequently, we've worked to prioritize and find efficiencies in proposed expenditures to strike a balance of adequately and appropriately funding public education in a fiscally responsible manner. In addition to funding programs to meet identified priorities, and Counselor Hamilton mentioned school safety, there are a number of items in here that are addressed to identify school safety. The licensed clinical social worker at the middle school, which is a school of eight hundred students with one guidance counselor. We're looking to hire two individuals to man the entrances at Ellsworth Elementary, Middle School, and Ellsworth High School, from the hours of three to six every single day. We're also looking to enhance security at Ellsworth High School, so in the event of a lockdown, we can more effectively and more efficiently lock down our hallways, which we haven't been able to do prior to putting that piece in the budget. Okay? We're also looking at enrollment trends, we're expecting a fairly good-sized kindergarten class, we need a new fourth grade teacher. Another item that we've been advocating for, for the past three years, is to hire a teacher to service our students who are eligible under federal law 504, um, which are students that need accommodations. Our special education staff has been managing those students for the past four, well, actually longer than that, probably the past ten years. It's a position that we desperately need. And I could go on on some other ones, and maybe I will in just a minute, but our record over the past four years demonstrates that we are fiscally responsible, and we're doing the best we can to make sure that our budget is appropriate and not an excessive burden on the taxpayers. When you look at the last three approved budgets in the Ellsworth School Department, okay, including a successful adult ed program, in FY 16, it was a two-point-two percent increase on the overall gross budget. FY 17, it was a two-point-six-four increase in the overall budget. In FY 18, it was a one-point-seven-six increase in the overall gross budget. Okay? Certainly, you know, I've heard the number seven hundred thousand dollars, and I agree, that's a lot of money, but what we're talking about is a little over a three percent increase in the overall budget. Three percent is a lot of money, but three percent is not a significant increase when you look at school budgets. Some of the other areas, again, these are areas that we've advocated for a, a number of years, and have had to take out of the budget because we want to be fiscally responsible. Under special instruction, we're looking at needing five new ed techs to address the needs of incoming students. Those are required by federal law. Okay? In our career and technical education program, you'll notice that there is a decrease in requests by about forty-three thousand dollars. If you remember last year, to get our biomedical program up and running on a full-time capacity, we needed to expand a significant amount of dollars to retrofit Hancock County Technical Center, both in equipment and in laboratory space, almost to the tune of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Those pieces are not in the budget. We didn't need that, those funds this year, we've removed them from the budget. Um, under other instruction, there are a number of things that we've been advocating for, for years, that we desperately need. One is for summer and after-school services for students. Counselor Hamilton mentions a proficiency-based model. One of the places that is a need for proficiency-based model is to give students extra opportunities to master the standards they're tasked with meeting. We're also proposing to have athletic trainer services at both the middle school and the high school. We're taking over control of the football program this year. Okay? In our student and staff services, which is where we have guidance, which is where we have health services, which is where we have technology, we have a number of new positions. I already mentioned the licensed clinical social worker, and some people may say, "What does that have to do with school safety and school security?" When you look at the profiles of school shooters, many times that there are some, uh, mental health issues that are associated with the profiles of those people. Addressing those needs at an earlier stage in a student's lives is important. Okay? We're also looking at adding a full-time instructional technology staff. You, as a council, know, over the years, that we've invested significant dollars in technology, infrastructure, hardware, and computers, through a grant that we're working on with the Department of Education this year, the K through three level. We have an additional three hundred laptops in our school system. Our existing technology staff can't manage, um, supporting those units without additional staffing. That's something we've been asking for, for three years. Proficiency-based instruction, we're including a halftime instructional coach, which is someone who's hired to work with teachers to help them improve their skills as they move towards a new instructional model. And to ensure that our data is very good, particularly with the increased demands coming from Augusta, and to ensure that data's good, which sometimes translates to funding, we've added a halftime data staff person to be shared with an existing halftime position to make a full-time position. Another place where there are a fairly significant amount of dollars is in facilities and maintenance. Okay, if you, any of you went to basketball games this year, uh, you will notice that we had the beautiful blue tarp in the Ellsworth High School gym. I know Counselor Hamilton, you were there many times, you probably saw that. Um, not a great thing, what we've got is a skylight on the roof that was there the original year that the high school was built, um, that's been leaking for two years. You know, there, there are monies in there to address those types of needs that have to be done. Again, I think back to having a school system that is going to support the growth and development of the city. Your schools need to not just be good and provide good programs, they need to look good as well, and they need to make sure that they're in good repair. So when you look at, uh, those types of expenditures, uh, please understand that those are pieces that we need. They're not luxuries, they're not frivolous items, they're items that we need. And again, if you think back to the presentation on April 13th, there are a number of other items that we would really like to have, but they don't rise quite as high on the level of priorities. So if you look at the overall budget that's being presented, um, to go along with what Counselor Hamilton said, certainly, uh, we've done a presentation publicly, and the details are out there. If any citizens are interested in having some of the details that I just mentioned in writing, we'll be happy to provide them, we'll put them up on our website. Because I agree, I think if people understand what is in the budget and where we're going as a school department, in concert with where the city is going, I think people will support that budget. When, when you look at this current budget, okay, and I think I'll reflect historically on a couple of other budgets over the past couple of years, if you go back to FY 16, 17, and 18. In FY 16, which was the second year of operation, and if you all remember, that was a year when state resources for education were very, very low. In order for us to simply maintain a current level of services, the council at that time supported an increase of local appropriation of almost nine hundred thousand dollars. It was a significant amount of money, but it allowed us to maintain our level of services. Over the past couple of years, however, you know, the school department has really been, done a good job being fiscally responsible. In FY 17, the final budget approved by voters did not require any increase in the local appropriation. No increase in local appropriation. In FY 18, this current year, um, the total local appropriation increase was fifty-three thousand dollars or point four-eight percent. The budget that's being proposed, uh, for your consideration this evening, it does have a seven hundred thousand dollar increase on the expenditure side. Okay? But I would ask voters to please understand that, when you're looking at the impact on the local appropriation, it's an increase of two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars or two-point-four-five percent. I think that's somewhere around a quarter of a mil. So I, I, I would put out to our citizens that, um, there's a lot of thought that goes into this budget, it's a fiscally responsible budget, we're identifying our priorities, identifying our needs, and putting the money in the places where we can continue to grow and be the best school system, uh, that our kids deserve and that our city deserves. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. I'll open the public hearing on the order approving total school operating budget for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2019. If there's anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Nobody wants to move it?
They're all looking at you, Steve.
Yeah, they're all looking at me.
Well-
Mr. Chairman, um, Council Order 051803, total budget article, recommended amount is twenty-one, twenty-one million one hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Move approval.
Second. Lot of money.
Lot of money.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Chairman, I want, just a question or comment-
Yes, sir.
-if I may, uh, towards Superintendent Mr. Higgins. Um, help, help me explain, help me understand so I can explain to people. I, I talked to you about this before, and, and I've been trying for twenty years, and I'm, I'm not, not with you, but I'm, I'm not successful when people ask, "Why does that school budget keep getting big or bloated?" in their minds, and we end up, uh, last fiscal year with, uh, let's just round it out, like a nine hundred thousand dollar fund balance, or something in that nature, and then we're now appropriating an, an extra seven hundred thousand in expenses. People just don't understand that, and in their simplest terms, just, just, just bring that home.
Simplest terms. Simplest terms, in this, in this current year, when you look at the $700,000 of additional costs, part of that is in your salary increases. Typically, it's salaries and benefits, but we've been very fortunate at Ellsworth. Over the past two years, we've had a 0% increase in insurance premiums. Okay? But you have salary increases, but I would also, in simple terms, let you know that when you look at the way that we budget salaries, we have a number of staff members who are retiring, for example, this year. When those staff members who are at the top level of the salary scale retire, we budget at a lower level. So when you're looking, for example, at regular instruction, which is where the majority of our teachers are located in the budget, and you see an increase of 2.63% overall, that includes a new grade K teacher, a new grade IV teacher, and a new section 504 teacher. To me, if you're looking at that number of employees, which is about 115, and you're only seeing a 2.6% increase with three new positions, I think that's effective budgeting. But the $700,000 increase, I guess I'm getting it to be a little less simplistic, I'll come back to that. The number of things that I just went through is a list that we added. New staffing to address enrollment and student needs, facilities needs, and safety and security needs.
So I guess the fund balance, not to interrupt you, but the fund balance, then, gets rolled back in. We have to use it or use part of it?
Yes.
Or it has to be showing in the next? This is what I think people don't understand, in large part.
And I will address that as well. If you think back to 2014, when Ellsworth withdrew from the larger RSU, the group that put together the budget that lit that year did a fantastic job, especially considering that they did not have an historical set of figures to go with.
Right.
One of the things that was included that year was a $1.2 million allocation of fund balance to offset local expenditures, which is way too high. I think it was an appropriate decision because of the amount of money that was expected to come back from the RSU. And I think that amount of money was in the 1.8, 1.85 million dollar range. What we have tried to do over the past four years is to bring that amount of money down to a more acceptable level. Because you're absolutely right, you're supposed to carry a fund balance of no more than 3% of your gross budget. If you look at our gross budget of approximately $20 million, you shouldn't be carrying a fund balance of more than $600,000. We've been trying to cautiously bring that down. Okay? The problem is, when you have a fund balance there and you used too much of it in one year. So we could apply, we could apply more money towards a fund balance for this next coming budget. The problem is, two years down the road, you're starting off that much farther behind.
Right.
It would be more of an impact on the taxpayers the year after than it would next year.
Just my own personal opinion, I think that when we're getting ready to pass these budgets, one of our big problems is messaging, and it's not getting out so people really understand it. And I remember that, that, that transition of bringing the school department home, and we kept saying over and over for two years, "It doesn't mean we're going to get the quality schools we want at a, at a lower price, that it's going to be a whole lot easier financially" and so, and we kept stressing that, knowing that it probably wasn't. And I think it was pretty accurate, and as you say, that first year with really no sense of history of what we were going to handle for a budget, they did all right.
It was well done, and we've been continuing to right-size in the areas that we can right-size. There were some lines that were over-budgeted, out of caution, and there were some lines that were a little bit under-budgeted. But again, without the history behind it...
Right.
It presented a challenge to those people, and those people did a fantastic job. But again, I think if you look at where we've been over the past four years, the items that we come and ask for and try to justify, I don't disagree. I think the message is there, I think it may be a matter of the message not necessarily reaching the desired number of people. I know you've been on the council since I've been here, a number of you have, you've sat through my presentations ad nauseam. I know we presented them to the council, we presented them to the school board. The Ellsworth American has done an excellent job in reporting the details. And if you go to the city's YouTube channel, you can watch the presentation over and over again. I think the details are out there.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Fordy.
Just a quick number. So when they asked me, "How many new FTE, full-time equivalents?", I know in the initial budget, I stopped counting at 32.
Oh, I don't have 32.
I know you don't now, I was wondering if you had...
Looking at all departments, 15?
Thank you. We're still tied. Number one in the ranking way. Are you one today?
Not in the lost column.
Anyone else?
Just, just in terms of something like a broken record, but I think, again, for people to look at what those positions are, and what they relate to, especially as they relate to student enrollment, it's really important to understand that, not just look at it in the context of number of FTEs without understanding what those positions do. So, again, I would just stress that, I hope people go to the website, go to YouTube, watch, watch it three or four times and...
Or call me 664-7100. I'm happy to talk to anybody about the budget. Or send it to them. And if you'd like to do PR for us, Council Hamilton, I would talk to you after the meeting.
Mr. Higgins, I don't know if this is a question you can answer, but of those 15 FTEs, how many are required by federal and/or state law?
Required by federal and/or state law?
Yes.
If you want to talk about required, I will tell you in the special education area, five of them. But when you look at the needs that we have, for example, I'm going to mention section 504, which is a federal law that provides for students that have, in some cases, physical disabilities and learning disabilities. It's kind of a sister law to special education. Special education comes with funding to support it. Section 504 doesn't. We've got over 100 students between Ellsworth Elementary, Middle School, and Ellsworth High School who are eligible under that title. They're being serviced by our current special education teaching staff. It's an unfair burden to them. So while it's not required, we believe it's absolutely necessary to have someone in that position to do the case management.
All set? Motion and a second, on the table. All those in favor? Next up, order appropriating and raising funds for adult education for FY2019 as required by the main revised statutes, Title 28 MRSA, Section 8603, 1A. City Council Order Number 051803 ordered that the city of Ellsworth appropriates, appropriate $206,176.13 for adult education and raise that same amount as the local share with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the adult education program. Comments? Questions? Is there a motion?
Public hearing.
Just on the first four, isn't it?
Oh, was it?
Public hearing. Let me scroll back.
Different statute.
No, I'm sorry, it is a public hearing.
It's ea, easier and safe, just do it, not worry about it, then, yep, I agree.
Hang on, let me get back to where I was. Does it need a public hearing?
I don't think so, but I agree with Councilor Fordy. I'm forced to agree with Councilor Fordy, it's better to do it than not.
Even though that hurts to agree with him.
Only on some things.
I agree with you both.
This is one of those one in doubt, public hearings? Do you have any questions, comments? Please feel free to step up. Superintendent...
Does this count me? Yeah, this is your, your successful adult education program, I'd like you to please note that there's a reduction in $22,398 in what we're requesting for a local appropriation. It's not because the program is going backwards, it's because we do have, and Council Crossway goes back to what you were talking about, we do have a fund balance in adult education program, we're using that wisely to make sure we have funding to support it if we need it, but also to reduce the local appropriation. So we're using that wisely. But that's also a program that's growing by leaps and bounds.
Anyone else? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the figure of $206,176.13 to fund the adult education for FY2019.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous? Order to raise local funds for food service in the Ellsworth public schools for FY2019. City Council Order Number 051803 ordered that the city authorize the sum $128,497.18 is hereby raised for all other expenditures, the food service program, for fiscal year 2018-19, and that the Ellsworth school department is authorized to expend any unexpended balances and additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the food service program. Public hearing is open on the, to raise local funds for food service in the Ellsworth public schools. Seeing none? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of $128,497.18 to fund the food service, local funds for food service in FY2019.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Order to authorize expenditure of grants and other receipts for school department programs. City Council Order Number 051803 ordered that in addition to amounts approved for the fiscal year 2018-19 school operating budget, the school board be hereby authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not appropriated for the school operating budget. Discussion.
Any likelihood of a $21 million grant?
I would like to think so, but no. If you know of one, please let me know, and I'll go chase it.
I'll grow here before that happens.
I, I think, but in a more serious note, we do get a number of federal grants for which you receive funding to support disadvantaged students, to support special needs students that are used to supplement public funds. We use those to the best of our ability to supplement those funds, and they're well-expended
Open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on the order to authorize expenditures of grants and other receipts for the school department? Speak now or forever hold it? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the order to authorize expenditures of grants and other receipts for school department program.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor? Order authorizing disposition of additional state subsidy. City Council Order Number 051803 ordered that in the event the Ellsworth school department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, the school board be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures for school purposes in cost center categories approved by the school board, increase the allocation of finances in a reserve fund approved by the school board, and/or decrease the local cost share expectation as defined in Title 20A, Section 15671-A1B, or local property taxpayers for funding public education as approved by the school board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer an alternative. In the past few years that this has been going on, I, I think they've got a good budget, they can do what they want. For this year, I would suggest that any additional state subsidy, subsidy that the school department receives be turned over to the city treasurer to reduce local property taxes.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
Second. Before we have the, do the public hearing first.
You can do that, yes, sir. I just wanted them to know what I was presenting before they had a chance to speak on it.
Open the public hearing on the order authorizing disposition of additional state Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council Beetham, did I hear you give a second?
I did. Are you clear on the language, are you? Okay, thank you.
Superintendent Higgins?
Just as a matter of record, and with all due respect to Council Fordy, the reason that the wording was put in the way it was, when we talked about this a year ago, it put in all the options to utilize the funds. So certainly, the reason it was put this way wasn't to necessarily say the school department wants to expend them, it just left that option open, but it also left the option open for what, Council Fordy, move, and Councilor Beetham, second. It was in there as a matter of procedure only.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, please.
The problem is, is that nowhere in there does it say the Ellsworth City Council makes the decision. It's the Ellsworth school board. And we know where you're going to spend it, because that's where you should be spending it, in your world. We want to spend it on tax reduction, and I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Because if you knew today that you're getting $200,000 more, I'd cut that out of your budget.
I wish I knew that, but I don't.
I know, I'm just saying, that, it comes back to the taxpayer.
I agree. And when, when that was, decision was made last year, the school board and superintendent wholeheartedly supported what the council did.
Yep.
And we will this year.
But you've got to advocate for your department, I understand that 100%, and I appreciate it.
Go Yankees.
Anyone else? Motion and a second. All those in favor? That's it on that one, right? The notice of amounts is...
It's a compilation of everything we've done.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the document that'll be posted in the polling place.
I'm sorry?
That's the document that will be posted in the polling place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, members.
Could I add just one thing?
You may.
I, I think probably in every community, the people of, of the town or the city feels that their educational system is one of the gems of their community. And since we have taken control of our educational system, again, in 2014, I feel that we are going in the correct direction on the road to improvement. And I applaud you as a superintendent, the staff, and the students for making it an improving situation.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a couple of us feel old, Mr. Chairman. How many people have sat here and listened to the presentation for the school department by another great superintendent from Ellsworth, Dale Higgins?
I know I had a number of conversations with Dale Higgins.
Is this a good time for me to depart?
Yeah.
And they're saying yes.
Moving on. Item 15, Council Order Number 051804, request of the city manager to negotiate heating fuel and propane prices and to execute necessary agreements on behalf of the city council.
For tho, for those of you here last year on the council, you recall, the council granted the manager authority to negotiate and execute fuel contracts in anticipation of the current season we're now in. Market conditions can change very rapidly, and it's difficult, oftentimes, prices are only held for 24 hours. So I would propose, once again this year, authorize the manager to do likewise, and, and in turn, I'd certainly work with the council chair, inform the entire council by email. If something... the council chair, inform the entire council by email if something were in play, and certainly work through the finance committee. But hopefully, from the input I've got from advisors that we use, we may be at that time when we want to lock in for next season.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the city manager to negotiate heating fuel and propane prices and to execute the necessary agreements on behalf of the city council.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. Counselor Fordyear?
No, scratch him ahead.
That's a scratch, okay. Counselor?
Before we go to vote, on behalf of the people that are here, I'm gonna ask that you turn some air on, because people are hurting.
Some of us are comfortable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, no, it's him.
Those in favor?
Motion and a second. But motion, motion and a second, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can breathe now.
Permission to take off my jacket?
Yeah.
Before you read number 16, I'd like to offer that number 20 goes, maybe you consider moving 20 ahead of 16, since they've been waiting for a long time. If that's appropriate to ask.
I, we don't have to agree. I'd make a motion to take 20, to suspend the rules and take 20 out of order before we go on to 16.
Second that. Motion and a second, all those in favor? Let's do it. Item 20, out of order, Council Order Number 051805, authorization for the city manager to enter into an agreement with A Climate to Thrive for installation of an electric vehicle charging station as part of a pilot project.
Steve, go ahead.
Assistant City Planner Steve Fuller, good evening, councilors. I'm here tonight to introduce this proposal for the installation of an electric vehicle charging station in Ellsworth. The proposal comes from A Climate to Thrive, and Gordon Beck is here from that organization tonight. Mickey and I have worked with Gordon over the past few months on this proposal. You have materials, I think, on this proposal in your packet, but just to recap, and for those in the audience, Climate to Thrive approached the city earlier this year with, with this proposal to install a charging station in Ellsworth using grant money, funding that they had received, and they have worked with other communities around eastern Maine, in Hancock County, and in the down east region, and have installed and, or in the process of installing charging stations there. And again, just as way to recap, several spots in the city were looked at as potential sites, and the proposal was refined to the point where it is right now, which is to have a two-vehicle charging station in the municipal lot on Franklin Street. And the general concept came before you previously at a finance committee meeting, you may recall, it was also run past the Ellsworth Traffic Safety Committee. Counselor Fordyear was very helpful with his electrical knowledge in providing perspective and, and information. And just as a final note, again, it's in, it's in the material you have, I think, but if you were to support this proposal, it does call for the city to pay for electricity at the station for a period of 18 months, and then after that time, the city could review how much use that's getting and decide if it wanted to continue that approach, or to upgrade to a, a model that would have the individual users pay for electricity. So myself, Mickey, Gordon, we're all here and available if you have any questions or need more information.
Councilors, any comments or thoughts? Counselor Fordyear?
Um, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, as, since Deputy Planner, Assistant Planner has mentioned, I've been involved with this. We've located a couple places that are possible. All said and done, the, the one that they have chosen is probably the best choice, I agree with them on that. It has a current 100 amp electric service on it for six parking lot lights in the Merrill lot on Franklin Street. That has enough amperage, we don't have to set a new service. Part of the agreement is they're gonna upgrade the panels, so there's room for these. I have suggested that as a partnership in kind, that we authorize our public works director to, to care, take care of the excavation with that mini digger. It's on our property, we know where it is. If not, Thrive, Climate to Thrive will readjust their figures and hire someone. But I thought it was a way to get buy-in from our city that we're working together with this organization, allow them to spread their money a little bit further on other projects. And it's just around the corner from our main street. It's in walking distance, people can park there for a couple hours to charge, enjoy the shops downtown, go to a movie, go to a restaurant. I tell you that Mr. Beck and I are also in conversation about another one, which will be the Rapid Charger. It uses a higher voltage and charges a lot quicker, and we have yet to bring that forward, but we're actively talking with each other about where in the city that would be appropriate. So, he may be back again in a few months. And we'll put him up front on the agenda, so he doesn't have to...
Counselor Moore?
I'll admit that I'm not entirely in the 21st century yet, but I, I find this a very interesting pilot project with the increase in electric vehicles, and who knows what's coming next. So I support it entirely.
This is a level two charger?
I defer to, defer to Gordon on that.
It's the consumer here on the end.
There is two level two chargers, one for each of the parking lots. They're independent.
Well, my wife will be so pleased now. Get rid of her level one.
There we go.
Counselor Moore?
Are these such that can be converted to the, the Rapid Charger, or does that have to have an entirely different system?
It's, that is a, a different system to do rapid charging. It takes much higher voltage, and therefore a completely different unit.
The, the gun on the Rapid Charger, is it the same style gun as on, what's on a level one and level two, or is it a Tesla style?
I, I can't get into the weeds on exactly what, there are two Rapid Charger connectors, they're different from what these level two connectors would be. The chargers that we're proposing to put in have J1720, I think that's what it is, standard universal connectors. Virtually every EV that's out there now can use these chargers. Rapid charging, it's a different system, and it requires a different charger, a different connector.
I'll tell her to upgrade her car. Mr. Chairman? Counselor?
Is, can you just state again the, how the cost, where the cost is gonna be, who is, who's bearing the cost for?
We, Climate to Thrive, are reimbursing the city for all of the costs of the equipment, the hardware, the protective pedestal, and the installation cost, other than the DPW doing the actual excavation. But there is no cost to the city other than in kind, so to speak. Once it's up and operating, it is wired into the existing Amera account that services that, that service panel. And so the ongoing cost would be any electricity that is used by an electric vehicle charging. And we have no way of really projecting that other than, you know, sort of anecdotal data over the past couple of years, because it all depends on what type of vehicle is doing it, and what rate, and how often. That will determine what the cost of that electricity will be on an annualized basis. The expectation is that in this first season or two, the actual use will be relatively moderate. It's not gonna be Teslas parked in there 24 by 7, by 365. You would, I'm sure, see some seasonal variation, and that's part of the nature of this as a pilot project. Probably several hundred dollars over the first year, several hundred dollars, possibly a little more over the second year, depending on, again, simply on use.
So you're talking hundreds of dollars, not thousands of dollars?
Yes. It's, it's, I don't want, there's no guarantees, I can't say...
I'm, I'm just trying to get, I mean, earlier when we were talking about...
It's definitely hundreds of dollars versus thousands of dollars at this stage of the game. If you went through the first season, and it was pretty good use, and, you know, it ended up being four or 500 bucks, you'd be keeping an eye on it the second season, and then there would be a good motivation to say, well, let's find a different model and upgrade.
And the reason I ask is just, earlier when we were talking about $3,000 for the harbor for the, for the new heaters, so, I mean, same, same issue in terms of the city's going to bear new electric costs, and we need to be mindful of it and, and budget for it.
Yep.
Counselor Fordyear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the hope that I have as part of this project is after the 18 months, we see a good amount of usage, that then we can upgrade to the credit card style, where the owners pay for it themselves. The problem we have going into it is the projections that I have in my mind, upgrading to that and the license to run that credit card machine is more than the electricity will be. So we'll, we'll go behind every month that way.
Yep.
So, to get the numbers and to get the usage, and at the end of that, as Mr. Beck says, if it's four, five, six, seven hundred dollars that second year, then we can afford to pay for the licensing and upgrade them, give these back to ACT, and let them repurpose it into another pilot program.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, also note that we're trying to work out a contribution method. We don't believe people would have any problem making a donation. We're not quite sure how we, short of leaving a plate there for people to put money on to, we're, we're a collection box, we're working on something.
Hubba Master knows how to build collection boxes.
There we go. There we go. And the other thing I'd mention too, is we are looking at bu, budgeting some, some of money, but we, we don't expect it to, to be significant if, again, this is all very new, and as Counselor Fordyear has said, after the first year or two of this pilot, then we can figure out whether it's too, it's not enough to me, to meter it at this point, and if we get to that point, that's a good thing, because it's working.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with A Climate to Thrive for installation of an electric vehicle charging station in the municipal parking lot on Franklin Street as part of a pilot project.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
May I make one last comment, or actually two? Thank you, first of all, for taking us out of order. And, and second, I just want to mention that Climate to Thrive is holding an electric vehicle symposium on Saturday, June 2nd, at the Moore Center. We'll send the information around on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we return to our regularly scheduled podcast?
Item number, hang on. Item 16, presentation by the city planner of, you wanna do A and B together, you wanna do...
So, the first one is just presentation, the 17 is the public hearing on the items, and 18 was, no, 17, was public hearing on the items presented in 16, and 18 is discussion of the repealing the moratorium.
Let me take these in order then.
Yep, absolutely.
Presentation by the city planner of A, Proposed Amendments to the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 3, Zoning Districts, Article 8, Performance Standards, and Article 14, Definitions pertaining to the siting of facilities posing risk to drinking water, lighting standards, medical marijuana, primary caregiver operations, and allowable home occupations in zoning districts.
Okay. So, I'm gonna take this in section, so we're gonna be going back and forth possibly between articles, um, 3, 8, and 14. So, I'm gonna start with the medical marijuana. This is not recreational, it's medical marijuana. So, just make sure that we're understand that first thing. We have a moratorium right now in place. The moratorium was extended once, is nearing its, its lifespan of six months again. So either you'd have to consider extending that moratorium a third time, or possibly consider making what's in the moratorium permanent regulations in the ordinance, which is what I'm proposing here tonight. The moratorium, the medical right now, marijuana, primary caregiver, the moratorium is on medical marijuana, primary caregiver operations. So what's proposed in the ordinance is that, as you may have seen in Article 3, in the land use table, primary caregiver operation would be restricted, would be prohibited in all zones, as a standalone commercial business. Okay? So that's what we're proposing. The amendment is being proposed in Article 3. In Article 8, it deals with the caregiver operation as a home occupation, allows it in all zoning district, which is per state law. And also has a small change pertaining to 18.10, which is on safe home occupation, which would deal with any issues or concerns, bring it back to the police, and that's under state law, because Dwight, the court enforcement officer, cannot do that. There's a small change, and I want to track your attention to, is in the table number 8.8.6. There's a sentence in there at the end that pertains, just kind of like a remember, reminds the reader that home occupation may also have to comply with Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, which is the Fire Protection and Prevention Ordinance. After the meeting, I had a, after the planning board meeting, there was a separate discussion with the fire chief and the fire inspector, and it's a non-substantial change, but we would like to take this sentence out of the ordinance and basically put it in a unnumbered box, which is therefore not part of the ordinance, but just a reminder that it may apply. And the reason why we're pulling this out is that we just did not want to get things more murky, especially that that deals with medical marijuana, as the, the ordinance pertains to multi-unit of three and more, but does not pertain to single-family dwelling of one detached or two attached. So we're getting in the weeds, literally in this. It doesn't, moving that sentence out of that table, putting it in an unnumbered, unnumbered box, does not take away the fact that in certain instances, they still need to comply with Chapter 4 if Chapter 4 is triggered, regardless of the home occupation. they still need to comply with Chapter four if Chapter four is triggered, regardless of the home occupation, just not for medical marijuana. So I'll just take comments if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, on that section right now before I move on to other things. So that's a com, that's what I have to offer for caregiver operation right now.
All right. Go ahead.
Keep going, okay. The other changes that we are proposing tonight are, um, lighting ratio standards, what we call the Wilson lighting ratio standards. Uh, that is found, again, in Article eight, um, in, on page date, ten, mostly, uh, in, um, the, uh, table. Uh, and it's all at the bottom of the table and I do apologize for the font. I do apologize for the darkness, but I have a problem with my program. What shows in the screen does not necessarily what it, it prints out afterwards. We had actually some major issues just delivering this document. So I want to apologize for that. I am fully aware that is way hard to see. It's hard to see for me, so. Uh, but at the bottom of the table, basically, um, it adds that if people have, uh, if a project has trouble meaning, um, the, um, I've got trouble reading as well, the minimum at any point or the average maximum at any point, that if they do a ratio, that we will accept the ratio. Um, the idea of the ratios is that, uh, you try not to have super bright light with super dark light. Is you try to have a kind of a, a progressive contrast. Uh, we've been using basically these two ratios of twenty to one and, uh, four to one for years now. Uh, so we're just basically proposing it that it be immortalized in the ordinance. Um, one more thing is the planning board has recommended that we had the word contrast ratio before the word. I'm proposing that we do this. There's also was discussion on adding a definition of contrast ratio. I cannot find a definition of contrast ratio pertaining to, uh, lighting ordinance as it pertains in a municipality. There is some wording for photography, but it does not necessarily apply. So I propose, and I don't see the, the need to add a definition, so that's what I have for the, um, the lighting ratio standards. Keep going?
Please.
Okay. Number three-
One, one comment, Michelle. I thought he's going to ask for questions. I've watched some of your planning board meetings and this idea of, of Darryl Wilson's is, is common sense.
Oh, yeah, it's excellent.
And I'd suggest that you put a definition in there for contrast ratio. See Darryl Wilson.
Okay. I'm sure he will like that. No, not the, yeah. Okay. Um, USDs and ASTs, that pertains to underground storage tanks and above grand, ground storage tanks. So what was brought to our attention is that is on Article three, page, um, page eight. Uh, we had a definition that dealt with tanks, a distance between tanks and lot lines. Didn't even make sense. It wasn't between a tank and a well, which really is what you're trying to protect with tanks, was lot line. And I look back and that language seems to have been carried over since the nineteen nineties and I bet you if I get going earlier, I would find it earlier. What we're proposing is, that is not even consistent with state law. We're proposing to take that out completely and, uh, simply add a reference to the two, um, pertaining state laws or, yeah. Um, and why we want to add it there is that's, is a reminder for us that that exists because we don't know all the state laws. And there's also in what we call an unnumbered aid, which is the, uh, square box on the right-hand side, which they don't appear like this on my screen, um, that basically is not part of the ordinance, but explain to the reader what this is all about. This is protection of groundwater, is make sure that grounds that are tanks, uh, that, uh, if they are, um, located, that they are, uh, meet state laws and also if there are wells or public wells, that there are certain distances and things that are maintained to protect, uh, the water quality of those wells. All state law, we have nothing to do with that. At last, uh, the definitions, we changed a few definitions, uh, just to make things consistent. I think there were two of those. Uh, and then the other definitions that we're proposing to take out are doubles. The doubles come from, um, it's a long story, but the double to definition of the same in a row, so we're taking those out. Uh, I am proposing two motions, uh, one to approve the, um, changes as presented with, um, the change to, uh, adding the word contrast ratio as recommended by the planning board as well as taking the line, uh, pertaining to Chapter four out and just putting it in an unnumbered, uh, aid or a box, as we call it. I can keep going for hours, but I'm pretty sure that's not what we want to do tonight.
We all want to get home tonight. Counselors, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I just, in terms of that, that change in terms of lighting, adding the one word in the table, does that, that clarifies in terms of, the presentation is that there are a lot of requests coming back? Is that really going to clarify it, to eliminate that?
Adding the word, adding the word's not going to really change anything. It just helps people understand what we're trying to do with those ratios. Just the way it's presented right now will help developers, period, regardless if you add the word contrast or not.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Um, we're in presentations now. We haven't had the public hearing yet.
Are we voting on these separately?
Number seventeen is voting on this one.
We're, we're on sixteen A.
These are presentations only.
Hmm, okay. You're right.
I will admit in my paper copy, I was kind of confused by the request to use the word contrast ration instead of ratio.
Yeah, I put ration. I'm very hungry, so maybe I, contrast ratio. Ratio.
Yeah.
Not ra, not ration. I even put the right emphasis on the right salable.
Ms. Chairman, may, may we just let her do sixteen B? That should be about a, a two-minute presentation on, on repeal.
Yes. I thought I did when I began with, I'm sorry. Uh, basically, there is, um, you have in your paperwork the moratorium and if you pass, um, depending how you decide to, if you're not going to pass the whole thing, then we need to have a discussion on how you're going to section it out. But, uh, anything pertaining to the first topic, which is medical marijuana, primary caregiver operation, if you do pass that, then you'd have to repeal the moratorium.
So it needs to go in that sequence?
Well, yeah, depending, if you feel uncomfortable passing the whole thing, then we can talk about more details afterwards of how we're going to do that. Because there may be some domino effect in certain areas.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seventeen? We're done with sixteen? Item seventeen, public hearing and consideration to amend the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty-six, Unified Development Ordinance, Article three, zoning districts, Article eight, performance standards, and Article fourteen, definitions. Is there anything else that you?
No, it's just a public hearing.
Okay. Any questions from the council first? Hang on, I'll get my notes. I'll open the public hearing on the consideration to amend the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty-six, Unified Development Ordinance, Article three, Article eight, and Article fourteen definitions. Seeing no takers, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the proposed amendments to Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fifty-six, Articles three, eight, and fourteen, including the novice's non-substantial changes recommended by the fire department pertaining to Chapter four and by the planning board pertaining to changing the word ratio to contrast ratio, with the exception of not adding a definition for contrast ratio as presented in this memo and related attachments.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, four to one, Counselor Crossway, opposed.
Should be five to one.
What did I say?
Four.
I'm sorry, five to one.
Do math. It's getting late.
Item eighteen.
No, B.
Item eighteen, public hearing and consideration, public hearing and consideration to repeal the City of Ellsworth Emergency Moratorium Ordinance on Primary Caregiver Operations Outside the Primary Residence.
I think we've heard about everything we do, need to, and we passed the replacement for it, so I'd recommend going right into public hearing.
We can do that. I'll open the public hearing. Seeing nobody, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to repeal the City of Ellsworth Emergency Moratorium Ordinance on Primary Caregiver Operations Outside the Primary Residence.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, five to one, Counselor Crossway, opposed. Item nineteen, public hearing in action on amendments to the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter three, harbor ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Remick.
Good evening. Prior to tonight's meeting, I had a conversation with Counselor Fordyear and, uh, a couple of changes on top of the ones that you have before you. If you were to look at section five, sub-paragraph four, um, letter B, we are talking about omitting the phrase city manager from those that can call a meeting. And then in that same sub-paragraph E, uh, adding verbiage that would mandate that the minutes, um, correspondence and notes of the commission be forwarded to the city clerk.
Counselors, Counselor Fordyear.
Um, since my name was used, um, reading down through it, I haven't seen any other committee, commission, or in fact, this council, um, that the city manager and in that, in this case, the harbor master is allowed to call special meetings. It's always the chair or majority of the full-time members request it. And I was trying to be consistent with all the other commissions and ordinances that we have. Uh, because if the dear manager or the harbor master can't convince the majority of the commission to call a special meeting, it's not going anywhere anyway. So to try to be consistent with the other areas in Ellsworth, I mentioned that. And, um, I, I, trying to capture for history, I, I want, I wanted to suggest that, um, once their minutes are kept and approved, that they be filed with the city clerk so they can go on the laser fish or in the scan or whatever, so that eight years from now, we don't have to go find the notebook in Chairman Remick's storage unit and try to remember what the discussion was. I thought that was, uh, historically significant.
That's also something that Heidi had brought to our attention about three months ago and most of those historical records have now been compiled and are ready to be transmitted.
And, and the other third question I had was, um, on Article four, which is using the launching ramp. It's required in section two that blocking of at least one of the rear wheels is required when you launch the boat. The problem is ninety-five percent of the boats that are launched down there, the rear wheels and half the truck are underwater. So I asked the chair to think about it and, and how it's enforced and do we really want a rule in our ordinance that we can't enforce? We can't have people trying to put a block three feet under the water and, so, um, nitpicking.
That's an important point. And Gary's right. We, we don't chalk the rear wheels. But mandating that we chalk a tire, uh, forward tire is perfectly appropriate.
I can't imagine trying to reach under there, chalk one of those rear tires.
A slithery D will get you.
Anyone else?
So, I'm ju, I'm just not clear, what, what are you amending in what's already been proposed?
What we're amending, amending is putting back into the ordinance a couple of sections that were in previous amendments, were somehow omitted. We're plugging those back in.
Nothing's changed from what's before us?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I thought you were presenting something.
No, we're making, we're making just a couple of minor changes to what was presented
in order to be consistent with the rest of the city's ordinances, uh, to boards and commissions. And to, the one comment about how we chalk tires is specific to one function in the harbor.
What you have in front of you, Counselor Hamilton, I'm proposing to amend it with those three issues, about who can call a special meeting, um, notes and, and, uh, minutes being provided to the clerk for historical, uh, storage and remove the blocking of a rear wheel while launching.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion? Public hearing.
They're going to get you the-
Public hearing. I'll remember that one of these nights. Open the public hearing. Does anyone that would like to speak, comments? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the changes to the harbor ordinance, uh, Code of Ordinances, Chapter three, harbor ordinance as presented. Uh, in addition, section five point four point B, add verbiage that, um, and remove verbiage that a special meeting can be called by majority of the full-time members and remove the authority of the city manager and the harbor master to call the special meeting. Section five point four E, as in Edward, uh, at the end of that statement, for the, the records of the commission shall be filed, uh, with the city clerk upon approval by the commission. And in Article four, section two, uh, remove the requirement of blocking the rear wheels, uh, on the launch ramp.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Further discussion? All those in favor? Any unanimous?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mark. Item twenty-one, council order number zero five one eight zero six, discussion in action on allowing the use of alcohol during events at Norton Park.
Good evening. Um, I would like to have just a discussion with all of you about this issue because we have had outside, um, residents, people asking if they could have bartender up there. It would be state mandated. Everything would be permitted, but could they have functions that also include alcohol? This is up for discussion and some guidance from all of you. I'm not asking for either way. As, if you remember, the last time I think we had it was before the park was totally complete.
That's correct.
And so, and, and, and there was, uh, an event up there with alcohol. It was roped off, it was under a tent. Um, but once the, the park was complete, we have not had that. So I'm just asking for some discussion and some direction. Yeah?
Counselor?
So, uh, I, I guess my opinion is I, I don't understand the need for it, um, especially in light of, that's a park for kids. Um, and the way it reads now is that you can't just reserve a section of it. Um, so if there's an event going on there with alcohol and the kids are still coming in there, I think it poses, uh, safety hazard for kids, um, by allowing it. I, I don't care how controlled it is. I just don't think it's the right setting to allow that in the city. There are plenty of other places, venues for people to go, and, and I would be, personally, I, I think it's a poor, poor idea.
Thank you.
I agree.
Well said.
Thank you.
What can you add? So you looking at me?
No, I, well, I was waiting for you to say something, so.
I agree in, in general with that statement, that, that it's a place for park and kids. There are some places in the public that alcohol is allowed only with council approval. So I'm just wondering if we blanket statement no, and then we miss out on an opportunity to have quite an event up there, and the ordinance prohibits us from doing it. Um, but I, I can support saying no, absolutely. I just trying to look ahead.
Can I?
I agree with Councilor Fortier. For the most part, I think it, it's correct to say no. But I think that there could be occasions, uh, of a, uh, public slash private nature, where I think the council should have authority to grant permission to, to have it, un- under guidelines.
Can I respond?
Please.
I think that if we ever change the rule that if you have a party, it can be private, you know, it's not just an open park. It's like rotary breakfast. Anybody can go to that. You may not be able to get the pancakes unless you buy them, but anybody can walk through it, um, and visit and all that. Until we change that, that it's open to anybody, even if there's a birthday party or whatever, I, I think it's safer to probably go without al- alcohol. Just because you don't have, you just don't have the control.
Question, um, who developed those rules and passed those rules?
The committee of the park.
Councilor Trump's a committee.
Well, that's true.
So we, we can, we can go in and change, we can go in and change the rules to allow roping off
Yep.
of a section
Oh, yes.
for a special event and allow a licensed alcohol vendor. I mean, if,
Yep.
I mean, we, we could do that if we wanted to.
Yep, yep.
So I, I just, I think if it comes to this level, we'll have the opportunity to look at, uh, the appropriateness of it, the security of it in conjunction with a fire and police, maybe even a mass, mass gathering permit and all the requirements that go with that, and I think that's at a different level than just using it on a day-to-day basis. I wouldn't want to allow, um, Uncle Tom to sit up there on the back bench with a six-pack. But I think if, if it's a council-approved use of the park and we close it for safety reasons, I, I think we, I think we need to look at that. I'm uncomfortable shutting it off completely. Lot of donors like to have a glass of wine.
Anyone else?
Is there a motion? Is, is, or is there a need for a motion?
I think there might be a need for some direction because we're having a lot of people call and ask for this. So we need some type of direction.
Okay.
Mr. Chair,
Yes.
Does it make sense, I think, I think we've got a sense of the council tonight. Uh, does it make sense from, from a staff level, for, at this point, to, to not allow it? Uh, however, it's still an open question as to, uh, under what circumstances, uh, may or may not be allowed, and certainly nothing would happen without council approval or adoption of a further policy. For now, though, is, is it a sense of the council, we should not allow it in the park?
I, I'll leave that up to, uh, the whole council.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd suggest, Mr. Chairman, right now, it's, it's not allowed. It's a public park. What I'm looking at is to massage the rules that the committee has set, not the council.
Right.
To allow those to be overridden under special circumstances by the council, um, and the way we do it, so, uh, I'm com- I'm comfortable just saying status quo until we get new rules in order. If that's what we want to do. We haven't, I haven't heard from everybody as far as.
Is there a motion?
I would move the, we advise the, um, Economic Development Director that the rules of the Norton Park at this time prohibit alcohol usage. It shall stay that way until we come up with a new policy to allow it in a controlled setting, approved by the city council.
Is there a second?
Oh heck, I'll second it just for discussion.
I thought you were gonna let me fail.
No, I would die for a second.
Well, it's, well, I think what Gary's saying is essentially what would happen if we didn't take any action at all? At some point, the council may sit down and say, well, we're gonna change the rules.
Well, right now, it's unclear because we've had a situation where there was alcohol there before. And so it's unclear as to whether you can and you can't. This at least makes it
Yes.
to the point where alcohol is not allowed until the council makes a final decision.
Right, that's right.
Period.
That's what we're, that's what we're looking for because we have parties asking us.
Yes, quite a few parties.
So.
I, I would suggest, though, if I may, Mr. Counsel, that order, that motion is out of order because it's setting a precondition for another future motion, and you're committing the council to something that may not have any, any, any traction at all, so, uh, that's for you to rule on, but it's my opinion.
And, Mr. Chair, I would just make a friendly amendment of just stopping the motion at that we're endorsing what the committee has already put out there, that it's prohibited, and leave it at that. Any future action we want to take, we'll take, but it doesn't have to be tied to the motion, nor should it be. I agree with that.
I would accept that.
I'll accept it.
With the understanding that we actively look at it and not just let it sit on a shelf like a study.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mickey.
Clear as mud, isn't it?
They'll get it eventually.
Item twenty-two, council order number zero five one eight zero seven, voluntary recognition of new union representation for Highway Department.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mo- motion and a second? I'd, I'd ask for further discussion, but I'm funny if you don't know that answer. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Move to adjourn.
Do I? You did not get a unanimous vote, sir.
I'm sorry, I got excited. I'm, I'm sorry.
For the second time tonight, you did not get unanimous vote.
It's been a long night, Counselor. Motion carries, five to one, council will be them opposed.
He was moving on to the adjournment.
Which I knew was coming.
Uh, Councilor Crossway said move to adjourn, and I said second.
All those in favor, unanimous.
I'm opposed.